Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another Bible study.
Good evening.
Good evening, Reverend. So today, we want to continue with the topic of faith. And we are going to delve a little bit deeper to understand, you know, faith as it's taught in the Bible. I mean, faith is a huge topic. So really, we could be talking about it for a very, very long time. But we want to focus on some important aspects. Today, we're going to be talking about some of Jesus's teachings or sayings about faith. So when it comes to the subject of faith, what I've discovered is that very often, our emphasis or our focus is on, "Lord, give me more faith." You know, we want to have great faith to be able to do wonderful things. And the disciples of Jesus found themselves in that very situation. One day, when Jesus told them to forgive, you know, even if somebody sins against them seventy times, seven times, they should still forgive. And Peter said, "Lord, increase our faith." Now, the Lord responded, he said, "If you have faith as little as a mustard seed, you will say to this mountain, 'Be removed and cast into the sea,' and it will obey you." In other words, Jesus said, "You don't need more faith. The faith that you have right now is enough to deal with the challenges that you're facing." I think it's so important for us to pause and reflect on that statement. The faith you have right now is enough to face any challenge that you're going through. You don't need more faith. You don't need more faith. Of course, we are often tempted to thinking that we do. But this question has already been answered. You don't need more faith? So question is, if we don't need more faith, if the faith I have is enough to deal with my challenges, how come I don't see the results that I am after? That's what we're going to be talking about today. Today, we're going to be looking at some aspects of faith that maybe are not unemphasized, but which are nonetheless extremely important for us to be able to actually make the most of our faith. Because everybody, as Reverend shared with us last week, everybody has been dealt the measure, the measure of faith. Everybody's got faith. You could not have, you know, you could not have been saved without having faith. The Bible says, "Faith comes by hearing, and hearing by the word of God." That's from Romans 10, and the context is salvation. It says, "How shall they hear unless they say preacher? With a heart a man believes, and with a mouth confession is made unto salvation. But how shall they hear without a preacher?" So then faith comes by hearing. In other words, that context of that statement, faith comes by hearing, is actually salvation. So you and I have faith. If you are saved, you have faith. And you have a different kind of faith, what I call the supernatural faith. Why is this supernatural? It's God's kind of faith. Do you know that there's natural faith and a supernatural faith? What is natural faith? It's based on sense knowledge. It's based on sense knowledge. When you board a plane, you don't, you don't go and check who the pilot is. You don't go and check, you know, they show me the paperwork to show that all the servicing has been done properly. You trust that the people who are supposed, all the engineers, were supposed to ensure that the plane, you know, runs smoothly and the whole airline runs smoothly, that they've done their job. And you trust them to do, you know, to do their good job, and therefore you trust them with your life. There's a certain kind of faith involved. But that's the kind of faith that is based on sense knowledge. You already know that there's an aviation authority that oversees the operation of airlines, and they are strict standards. In fact, when I started learning a little bit about that industry, I discovered that the standards there are higher than in hospitals. That's the truth. The standards in the aviation industry are higher than in hospitals. So if you look, there are fewer accidents, aviation accidents, than hospital accidents, which happen all the time. They are much higher standards. So you have sense knowledge. You know something about the way things work. That's why you trust it. If nothing else, if there were air crashes every day, many people want to fly. Those events are rare. That's why you still have confidence in that system, in the aviation industry. It's based on sense knowledge. You know something. You know something that gives you confidence. If the facts changed, you would adjust your position. You wouldn't be so sure about flying. In fact, anytime there's a major aircraft, if unless the fault is understood. If there's a mystery surrounding it, it makes people a little bit hesitant about flying. So you can see that the trust that we put in the aviation industry, it's based on sense knowledge. What I mean by sense knowledge, knowledge that comes through our senses, through your eyes, your ears, your touch, smell, taste. The knowledge that comes through these senses, they fill us with some confidence. And remember, faith is the assurance of things, hopeful. It fills us with some confidence. So we don't have the kind of evidence, for example, whereby you haven't gone and checked the plane over yourself. So at the end of the day, it's still not direct knowledge, but you still have confidence based on your understanding of the systems that are in place and the reliability of those systems, the historical reliability of the systems. That's natural faith. God's kind of faith is different. He calls things by name that don't exist or aren't visible. He calls into being. If you read Isaiah chapter 45, God talks about a man called Cyrus. He said, "He is my anointed. He will do what I please." And the Lord was talking about a man that would be born maybe four hundred years later. He was talking about a man, you know, I don't remember the exact number of years, but when Isaiah made that prophecy, Israel was a long way from their exile. And as we know, they went into exile, and seventy years later, Cyrus appeared on the scene to fulfill Isaiah 45. So Cyrus's parents may not have been born when God made that prophecy. That's God's kind of faith. He looked in the beginning, there was, the earth was without shape. He looked at what was there. He looked at the darkness, and then he said, "Light be." In our Bibles, it says, "Let there be light." But the direct translation from the Hebrews, "light be," and then boom, there was light. Question is, where did that light even come from? When you study the account in Genesis, it goes all the way to day four or so before the sun is actually created to become a source of light. God simply called forth light. That is God's kind of faith. He looks at a situation that is diametrically different from what he wants it to be, and then he says, "Be," and the situation changes. That's God's kind of faith. And that's the faith that Jesus operated when he was on earth. And that's the faith that you and I exercised when we became born again. You see, we haven't thought about it. So sometimes we think it was just a natural thing, or somebody came, preached to me, "I understand that I'm a sinner. I was a sinner, and I believed, and then I got saved." No. What actually happened? What does, what does a sin look like? And what does sin look like when it's forgiven? Where is your hard evidence to prove that you have been forgiven? You say, "I felt forgiven." It's just a feeling. Feelings come and go. How do you know you are forgiven? How do you know there's a God? How do you know that Jesus is truly the Son of God? How do you know that you are saved? All these things that you know and you're confident about, you could not have come to that position without God's grace. That's why Hebrews, I say Hebrews, Ephesians chapter two talks about, it says, "By grace we are saved." By faith you are saved, by grace. I'm just getting my words mixed up. Salvation is by grace, through faith. And that is, that's not of yourself. In other words, even the faith is not of yourself. Stop talking about the grace. Grace is obvious that it's not of you. Obviously. Grace is God's provision. But I say, even the faith is not of yourself because your natural faith is what I described. It's like the faith in the airline industry. As soon as the facts change, your position changes. But have you noticed that people are thrown into fire? In the first century, Christians were thrown into the lion's den to go and face lions, and were eaten alive, and they sang as they were being eaten alive. So much so that the Emperor Nero used to block his ears. He said, and he used to scream, "Why do these Christians sing? Why do they sing?" They are supposed to be crying and begging for mercy. This goes beyond just, "I believe." Something inside these guys, something supernatural was preventing them from casting, you know, casting away the confidence that they had in God. So the faith that leads to salvation is supernatural. It is not the natural kind of faith. That's why when circumstances change, in fact, Christians become more hardened in their faith when they face persecution. You see, Christians that are flip-flopping here and there today, one leg in the world, those are Christians in, when the times are good. When times are good, that's when we play those games. But when true persecution comes, the true believers, they hunker down. They become more hardened, tougher Christians because the faith inside them is precious. The Bible says, "More precious than silver." That's why God is not afraid to try it because he knows what he put inside you. So he knows that even if you go to trial, it's nothing because he has put something inside you that is indestructible. So you have a faith within you that is supernatural. Supernatural. You didn't, you know, you didn't magic this thing yourself. You can't talk somebody into being saved. You can't talk someone into being saved. You can present a gospel to them. Then the Lord goes to work in their hearts. Their heart begins to suffer. It begins to suffer, and at some point, boom, the heart starts to see the truth. The conviction that you are a sinner versus the knowledge that you are a sinner. They are two different things. There are many, many sinners who will acknowledge that they are sinners. Before I got saved, I saw myself as, I would have agreed with somebody if they said, you know, "Are you a sinner?" I wouldn't have tried to pretend that I wasn't. But that didn't save me. Conviction that you are a sinner and that there are consequences to being a sinner. That is supernatural. God is the one that puts it in your heart. You realize, "Who is me?" The way Isaiah had been prophesied, from Isaiah chapter one to chapter six, he'd been prophesied, doing his own thing. I mean, doing his own thing, prophesying just like any prophet. Then in chapter six, boom, he had an encounter with the king of kings. He saw the magnificence of the law, and he screamed, "Who is me?" That's conviction. When that conviction hits you, the only thing you can say, "Lord, have mercy," and then grace comes, wipes you, wipes the slippery thing, purifies you. From that moment, you now have faith towards God, and faith is supernatural. It is from this faith that you're now going to anything that you want to get from God. It's now based on this supernatural faith that had its beginning when you were saved. The problem with us is that we start, Colossians chapter two says, "As you began in Christ Jesus, so walk ye in him." In other words, the same way in which you believe, grow. But that's not what we do. Your faith was supernatural. You couldn't, you couldn't have saved yourself. It wasn't possible. You couldn't. You could have recited a sinner's prayer, but you wouldn't have been saved. Conviction had to come supernaturally. And then God gave you the grace to believe, and you believed. And God says, "Just as you were born again through that process, grow in him." Let that supernatural faith reign in your life, whereby every day of your life, your life is a miracle. Every day of your life, you are not walking by your sense knowledge, which produces natural faith. You're walking by the conviction in your heart. You read the word of God. The word says, "You are head and not the tail." The word says that you are more than a conqueror. The word says, "You read what the word says, and then you believe that about yourself." You don't look at your circumstances. This afternoon, they just don't know me that I've been canal because my doubts come from cannality. I don't know about you, but sometimes I doubt myself seriously. Sometimes I feel like I'm rubbish. Sometimes I feel like there's so much that can be sorted within me, and it makes me feel like inadequate. Then they don't know me. It's because you are walking by sight. You are walking by your hearing, by your using sense knowledge. You're using sense knowledge. You stand in front of the mirror. You don't like what you see, and then you judge yourself. You look in your bank account. You don't like what you see. You judge yourself. You listen to yourself talk. You don't like what you hear. You judge yourself. So your judgment of yourself or your assessment of yourself is based on what you can see, hear, taste, touch, smell. And that means you are not operating in faith, in God's kind of faith. You operate in the sense knowledge kind of, in this case, it's not even faith. No wonder faith doesn't work for us. So you say, "Lord, but I'm believing in you." Yes, you are believing. Yes, you are believing. But to what extent are you plugged into the reality of the word of God? And to what extent are you plugged into the reality that's surrounding you? The word says this about you. The mirror says this about you. The word says this about you. People say this about you. The word says this about you. Your own thoughts are portraying a different message. Whose report will you believe? Whose report? Are you going to believe what's written in the word of God? Or are you going to believe what you can see here, touch, smell? That is the key. If our faith is fostering, Jesus said, "You don't need big faith, just as little as mustard seed." Now, the problem is, are you using that mustard seed faith? Or are you actually plugged into something else? The devil knows that we've got our ears pruned to what the world has to say. So he frightens us. The book of Job, Job said, "I'll lie down and sleep," but then you frighten me with dreams. The devil didn't just attack Job physically. He attacked him in his dreams because he knew he could get his attention there. What are you plugged into? The devil is trying to get your attention to different things. What are you plugged into? Are you plugged into the word? So that you are literally like a blind man when it comes to whatever the devil wants to show you. You are like a deaf-mute based on what the devil wants to show you. You don't even know what he's talking about because you are so plugged into the word of God. If that's what you're doing, the Bible says, "Faith comes by hearing." As you're plugged into the word, something will bubble within you. And the thing that you thought was impossible, you'll suddenly begin to see a possibility. It's supernatural. It's supernatural. As you are exposed to the word, it breaks down barriers within you and you begin to benefit from this faith, this supernatural faith that is inside you. It needs the word of God to grow. Faith comes by hearing, and hearing, and hearing, and hearing by the word of God. Faith comes by continuous exposure to the word of God. Not having your quiet time for twenty minutes, then that's it, you check out. No! You, you read in the morning or whenever you prefer to read. But then during the day, you meditate on the word so that your thought processes are aligned with the word. You've got to plug yourself into the word so much so that when somebody hooks you, it's scripture that comes out. Whatever goes in, that's what's going to come out. Then your faith will not fail. When Jesus was on Mount, on Mount Dolph, you know, the Garden of Gethsemane, just before his death, before his arrest, he went to pray. When he came back, disciples were sleeping. He said, "So you couldn't even pray with me for an hour? Watch and pray that you don't fall into temptation." You know, I used to think that was just about, you know, what we call traditionally prayer, prayer, what we call prayer. You know, prayer, just sweating and shouting and... And then they don't know me. The prayer for Jesus, in this particular instance, we know that he was agonizing and praying. But all the other times, in the Bible tells us that he went to spend time with his father, we don't even know how he prayed. On one occasion, he was just chatting happily and rejoicing, chatting to his father. Then it thundered. I mean, the Lord responded, and the people said, "It thundered." It was about dwelling in the presence of his father. That's what Jesus considered to be prayer. So you spend time reading the Bible in the morning, but then you spend the rest of the day dwelling in the presence of your father, soaking your head in his word. Jude, Jude, in Jude's letter, he says, "Eat yourself in the love of God." I thought it was God that was supposed to keep me in his love. No, he has done it already. Now it's me to keep myself in his word. In other words, don't stray away in his love. So the question is, how are you spending your time? How is your faith going to grow if your time is not immersed in the presence of God? The devil can come and attack you when you are in his presence. He can't. In his presence, there's fullness of joy. So we must create an environment that enables faith to grow. Faith must be nurtured. It's like when you plant a seed, and the word of God is a seed, you nurture it. You give it water. If you're growing it in a pot, in a plant pot, then you have to add in some nutrients. You have to create the right temperature conditions for it. If it's outside, you've got to make sure that it doesn't get burnt by, you know, the heat of the sun whilst it is still a seedling. A time will come when that little seedling has turned into a tree, when it will no longer be afraid of the sun. In fact, it will provide shade for the birds and for people. But whilst it is still small, immature, it must be protected. It must be shielded so that it may grow. Your faith must be nurtured. It must be protected. It must, you must create conditions for your faith to grow. And the word of God, studying the word of God, is one of the ways in which what you nurture your faith. When you start a campfire, what do you do? You find some twigs or bushfire. You stand, you gather some twigs, add some dry leaves. You light a match. You start the fire. At the beginning, what happens? If the wind blows, you see the flame dancing about, and you know you have to protect it because if you don't protect it, the wind can blow it out. So you must protect it. At the same time, you must feed that flame with some oxygen. So you won't protect it completely. You shield it partially, and then you blow gently until the wood starts burning. And once the wood starts burning, you don't have to worry anymore. From that moment, the wind is an ally of the fire. In the beginning, it's an enemy, but later, it's an ally. You must nurture your faith, shield your faith. Many of us, we want to see great things in our lives. We want God to do great things for us, and we want to utilize our faith to get those things. Faith involves a process. Faith involves a process. Why? Why does faith involve a process? It involves a process because. It comes through the word of God. Faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. And because it comes. Through the word of God, and the word of God, Jesus likened it to a seed in the parable of the sower. Every seed must be sown. Then it must germinate and gradually grow. It's a process. We want to emit, we want to get to the tree stage. We want to be, you know, where the tree starts bearing fruit. And the birds of the air come and nest in its boughs. But it's a process. When you start walking in faith, you're not going to be strong. Why? Because walking in faith involves a different way of thinking. It's a way of thinking that you are not familiar with. The world operates by, show me the evidence and I'll believe you. Natural faith. God's kind of faith says, we are calling into being that which doesn't exist. That's God's kind of faith. So it's a different way of thinking. And you are not going to just wake up one morning and start working in this kind of faith. Let's say you need healing. You look at your situation, the situation is telling you the exact opposite. Of what the word of God is saying. Whose report are you going to believe? But once you are started. You, it's new territory. So what do you do? You take baby steps. You take baby steps. You want to see a mighty healing in your life. Start with headache. Start with, I will resist this headache, or I'll resist this toothache, or something else. Take baby steps. Nurture your faith. Grow with bit by bit. A time will come. When you'll be able to withstand the storm. When you'll be able to. Use your faith to get bigger things. To start using your faith now. Don't wait till there's a major challenge in your life before you suddenly want to believe God for something bigger. I'm not saying it's not possible. God works in mysterious ways and he can find a way to reach you. But we are, this is a Bible study, we are learning the basics, we are learning the fundamentals. And that is you must start using your faith. I discovered this truth many years ago when I, you know, I was a student. And I took the word of God literally. You know, I took it literally when I discovered that this is true. Oh, okay, this is true. Then if I'm, if I fall ill, I don't have to immediately run, start running around looking for. Medicine. Let me start believing. By the way, I am not against you taking medication. I'm a doctor. I prescribe medication and I recommend medication. But in the name of growing my faith, I had to take certain steps. There are people who don't believe. In Christ, who don't use medication at all. You go to places like Jamaica, they don't take any medication, they don't believe in medication. And they live healthily. So it's not something outlandish. But. To come back. You're trying to take baby steps. You're trying to learn how to walk in faith. This, I'm trying to make it practical to you, so it's not some theoretical thing. Start testing your faith in small things where the stakes are not high. So that you don't feel like, hey, if I fail, then I die. No, don't, don't do that. You have a condition that if you don't get treated, you die. Please don't play games. Start with smaller things. Pray for something in your children's life. Pray for something in your family's life. Start putting this thing to test, to the test. And as you see the results, it will encourage you, it will strengthen you, you begin to see, huh, so this thing works. And then you take the next step. Sometimes it won't work and then you don't get offended. It's a process. You are learning, you are learning how to walk. So if you trip, it's okay. You just get up and continue. Learn bit by bit how to walk in faith and how to think the way God thinks. Who calls into being things which are not. Because faith involves going against the grain. Because you are literally looking at a situation that is dire and you're saying, but my God shall do the opposite. There is natural opposition. As simple as that. When you go against the grain, if everybody is heading this direction and you're going this direction, there's going to be a collision. Collision of opinions. There are things that you're trusting God for, that you're silently believing in your heart that God will do for you. If you voice it, if you go and tell some people about it, they will mock you. And if your faith hasn't grown to the point, to the position of a tree, where you are not bothered by the wind. If you haven't gotten to that position, please don't go telling people. What you are believing God for. Because if they start mocking you, and they're mocking you not because they are evil, they're sometimes they just feel like you are not being realistic. But if they start mocking you. You have a natural tendency to lean towards what you can see here, taste, touch, smell. Remember that. So if they start mocking you and giving you evidence that contradicts the word that you are believing in. It will shake you, it will stir up something inside you called unbelief. Unbelief is. Any belief system or idea that stands in opposition to faith. It stands in opposition to what you are believing God for. That's unbelief. And it's not necessarily sinful in the sense like that. It's just evidence that contradicts your faith. You are heading south, or you're heading north, unbelief is heading south. It's going in the opposite direction and the two of you are going to collide. That's how it works. Unbelief is going to hold you, but I believe, say, hey, 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 stop being foolish yet. Because faith involves doing things God's way. Approaching things from God's perspective. And that in God is not hindered by sense knowledge. When Peter, you know, remember the story of Jesus walking on water? Peter was in the boat with the others. He saw Jesus coming. They all thought he was a ghost. Then Jesus said, no, not to be afraid. This, Peter says, if it's you beat me, come to thee. And Jesus said, come. Have you noticed? That's it. That's all he had, that's all he had to say. Hey, it's not like cross the road and come. There's water. He says, didn't even make it, okay, because you're coming, Peter, I command this water to be still, I prevent this water from poisoning. No. That's God's perspective. That's how, as far as his concern, the waves he writes on the word, they are nothing. And that is because you are his child and he put that kind of faith in you, that's how he wants you to operate, to be able to operate. He says to his disciple, come. So Peter gets out of that boat, doesn't consider that he's not on solid ground. Because he did not consider. The fact that water cannot support. Your weight. It did not, it didn't cross his mind. In other words, the sense knowledge coming from the, what, looking at the waves. Didn't interfere with the word that he heard from Jesus. You see how Jesus said, he said, faith as little as a mustard seed. So Jesus simply said, come. Peter, naively, impulsively got up, not considering anything else. There was power in that word, come. To keep him from sinking. From drowning. And he started walking on the water. What happened whilst he was walking on the water? He looked at the waves. What the waves got to do with his being able to walk on water? He couldn't walk on water if it was a perfectly still water, exactly walk on it. So the fact that he was walking on water had nothing to do with the state of the water. Of the lake. It was because of the word. That he had received. And he had not considered alternative. Alternatives. As soon as Peter turned his eyes from the word. And started to look at alternatives, what happened? Boom, he went down. My question for you, did God's word stop working when Peter started sinking? They, or rather, let me put it this way, what God, the word come, the Jesus said, did it lose validity? When Peter started sinking? The answer is no, the word was still in operation. Because the word that comes out of his mouth will not return to him void. So that word did not stop operating, it was still working. Yet Peter was heading in the opposite direction. Why? Sense knowledge. He saw the waves. And he said, hey, what am I doing? Am I mad? I'm walking on water, I'm in trouble. And because he had an alternative way of thinking about that situation. God's word could not stop the waves, not stop the water from doing what water normally does. Are you seeing how this works? God's word power, there's no problem with God's power. God will release his power every day. But you and I, through our thinking, totally deactivate the word of God. Not by, if we do something sinful, just by considering sense knowledge, your situation, and letting your situation speak louder. Than the word of God. So as long as you allow your situation to speak to you louder than the word of God, your faith will not work. And it will feel as if God is not compassionate. God have cried to you, how many times do I have to cry? It's not him all. Did you notice that Jesus was still there? On the water with Peter whilst he was, he was sinking, whilst he was drowning. Jesus was there. His presence did not stop Peter from sinking. Next time you think that, ah, God, I prayed, are you even present in my life at all? Remember that he was there with Peter. You can't, he can't be there with you while you are sinking. Not because he doesn't care. But because you've broken the law. And he created the whole heavens and the earth. He built everything based on laws. You go against the law, you face consequences. Peter started looking. And he started going. And for that moment, the word that should have kept him. Afloat. Stopped being effective. It was still working, but the results were not being seen. Because Peter had deactivated the word. So you and I have the ability. We have the power to do incredible things with a little faith that we have in our hearts. We can also make the word of God to become ineffective in our lives. Through our unbelief. Through the sense knowledge. Now, belief comes in different forms. I've just explained how sense knowledge is one of the ways in which unbelief comes. But public opinion or popular opinion is another one. You know how we like to be respected? Acknowledged? Or not ridiculed by people? We don't like it, we don't like to stand out. We don't like to stand out, we don't want to be the odd guy. So if it means. Bending over backwards. Throwing away our standards just to fit in. We will do it just so that we are not shunned by other people. We do everything to avoid rejection. But whilst you are doing that. You are deactivating the word of God. You see, as soon as you start considering your circumstances, as soon as you start considering what someone says. It deactivates the word of God. What someone thinks about you, you let that affect you, it deactivates the word of God. Let's read this passage that's right in front of us. How are you able to believe while receiving glory from one another and you're not seeking the glory from the Holy God? John 5:44. The context is when Jesus had healed a man at the pool of Bethesda and. You know, in God's gospel, it happened repeatedly where, you know, the Pharisees got really upset because maybe he did it on the Sabbath. And Jesus took them to task. He started to expose one of the things, the Pharisees, they used to have this flowing. You know garments, these flowing robes that they wore and they were called rabbah. They had this renown amongst people and. And they praised each other and they counted on the glory that they received from one another. Those things mattered to them, so much so that if you brought the truth. But accepting the truth would mean a rejection. By their colleagues. They would reject the truth instead. So Jesus said, how can you believe? You who receive glory from one from another, you collect funds from, you know, left, right and center. You are so in tune with public opinion. You are so in tune with what someone else will say about you. How can you give the word of God? Reimines in your life? How? For the word to produce faith in you, it must be king. The word must be king, the word must rule. It must have no competitors. In your life. That's when you speak. And you come to pass. Because you are not speaking of yourself, the word inside you is speaking and the word is a person. Jesus said, my words, they are spirit and they are life. When his word has come to dwell within you richly. With spiritual understanding. When you speak, you're speaking your own words. You're speaking his words and his words are spirit. And they are life. Then things will happen. So. Think I need to run up? It comes by hearing. Hearing the word of God. Hearing, hearing, not a one-off experience, you know, um. A one-off experience. It's something that's supposed to keep happening all the time. We must dwell in an atmosphere. We must dwell in an atmosphere where we are, we know what God's word says about our situation. The word inspires us, it gives us wisdom when we enter into a situation. We must be so totally immersed in the word of God. If we do that. Faith is not a problem. It's a natural product of the word of God in a person's heart. We said it, we said that the passage faith comes by hearing, the context of that passage was what? Salvation. That was the context. And you and I are saved. Because God put his supernatural faith within us. How did he do it? As we listened to the word of God, the power in the word of God transformed our hearts. Made our hearts receptive. To God's grace, we were able to believe. We believe even though we don't have tangible proof. No one on this call has tangible proof of the existence of God. None of us have solid, you know, physical proof. Of the existence of God. We haven't seen God before, yet we believe. And as I explained earlier, the more they persecute us, the more we believe. And that's because our faith is not of our own self, it is a supernatural faith. That's why we believe in spite of. Execution. And you have that faith. Peter said, increase our faith. Jesus said, if you have faith as little as a master seed, you are good, you are good to go, you don't need anymore. But that faith must then be put to work. In little things here and there, ready to go for something small, you see a result, you say, wow. Don't just go and give testimony in church. That's what many, many people do, oh, some girl and then they go and give testimony, they make a lot of noises, they overcame them by the word of their test. Please. When I pray and God does a sound, so you do such things, okay, I've got more for you. Let's go to the next one. Of course, I am growing my faith. I don't have time to go and be telling people this and that. I am nurturing my faith. To go and tell somebody something that somebody might not say hallelujah, somebody might not say amen, then you walk away feeling uh offended. Now, instead of being on a path to feel greater faith, you are now on the path into the flesh, into unbelief. Nature your faith quietly. Quietly. Grow it day by day. Exercise it day by day. It's a spiritual exercise. Study your Bible, then meditate through the day. Soak yourself in an atmosphere of God. And if you create these conditions. For the word of God, faith will grow from within you. Whilst your faith is but a seedling, like a seedling. Shield it. But the day will come when your faith will grow into a tree, when you'll be able to withstand adversity and you'll be able to, you will see. Contradictory situations and you say, don't worry, it will come to pass, just as I have said. And it will come to pass, what? Because you now have a track record, you've grown your faith. So if you are believing God for some mighty miracle now and you are not seeing results, don't be offended. Maybe you haven't taken time to grow your faith. Maybe you are going from kindergarten to university stuff overnight. Maybe that's what's going on. Grow your faith, there's a process. There's a process. I pray that this has blessed you. I will stop here and see if anybody has something to share or any questions. arising from what you've heard, if still be, please unmute yourself. Welcome Sue. Welcome Arba. Welcome Fred, it's been aware, our high priestess finally joined us.
Thank you also.
How are you?
By God's grace, I believe you also well.
I'm very good, I'm good, thank you. Good, good. Anything to share, any? Points to raise?
Oh, you've been awesome, I've been blessed, I enjoyed it, I also want to hear more from others.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Bro, usually you you kick us off, of course, I don't know if you have anything to share today.
Oh. Today I learned something. Small which I feel. It's enough to really help you to operate within the principles that God had stated. You know, you cannot do things by your own understanding.
Yes.
And believe that miracles will happen unless, of course, you follow the principles that have been laid down by God.
Amen.
And these principles normally. Will look like, it's like, you 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 are on a path going. You know that this path will take me to this area, but God is saying that to get to that path, you must make a U-turn and go the opposite way. And that is how you can reach your destiny. So with this principle, then now I look at my own life. I look at the way I operate and realize that it is not by my strength. But to obey what has been written in the book of life for us. And then whilst you do that, you certainly will be able to achieve a lot for yourself. Thank you.
Amen, thank you, thank you for that. Great, um, Shiloh, anything to add? Anything to kick kick us off? Or questions?
Okay, yeah. Oh Jude, 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 that's okay, can mommy speak? Okay, well done, you said hello, so it's mommy's turn.
How are you?
I'm fine, and you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good, good, excellent, good to hear.
Okay, right, so I think for me. Um, just like our brother just said, um, the. Uh, recently, what has, what is coming to me is knowing that. Uh, in the kingdom of God. We Christians, we have to know that there are principles. And um, there are laws of engagement.
Yes.
In the things of God. And I think today, listening to you, I I've never thought about faith. As um, has also principles or a rule of engagement that I have to follow. Or or and I think you rightly said that there is a process to it. And I think that is, that is anchoring me more into the things of knowing that. Just like, uh, um, it's been said about so many things that. That that in the kingdom, there are principles and most of the times, most of us are not being able to realize um. Um, things or money, cause things to be manifested in our lives. And to show the power of God because we are not following his lay down principles. So for instance, what they're using to explain to me or what the understanding and the knowledge I'm coming to. Is that just like God created gravity and that. I cannot, if I jump, I will come down, I will not float in the air. The same way with say, um, um, if I want to, um. Achieve something or I have, I want to become rich, there is a principle that is there. It's not just about me sitting down and praying and commanding and saying that things have to fall into place. And then it will fall into place. So I do remember when we are in school. Um, 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 some people will say, it's when it's time to learn, they will say they're going to pray. They will pray, pray, when they come, they will come and sleep. And then when there is exams, then they fail, then they don't understand, they said. But we spend all our times in the presence of God and then why has this happened? But then what we forget, as I think, it it whether it's a myth or it's a misconception or it is. We not being taught properly or we not understanding um, the things of God properly. And we stewarding it wrongly, um, and applying um, God's word or doctrine wrongly. And we are not able to manifest his glory so that we spend all our time praying. And we come and we sit as I was and we fail and we say, um, but God said, seek first the kingdom of God and its righteousness. And all things will be added to you. But then you are not being able to manifest his glory, you are not being able to manifest. The things that he said, that we will be like a tree that is planted by the rivers of water, so we should excel and we should become the head and not the tail. I think for me, I mean, it's it's a wonderful thing that I have come into now. And um, um, today, I think you touched upon it again with faith. And it was really resonating with me and I'm seeing that it is a seed that I have to sow. And I have to nurture it little by little for me to be able one day to stand and say, let this mountain be moved. And it will move because it has gone through a process, because I will have all the patience, I will have all the. Up and downs and things in there. I don't know whether I'm making sense, but I'm all over the place. Yeah, that is what I have come into today and I'm so happy.
Oh, good, good, good. I'm also really happy listening to you. I think, um. Yeah, you you've got it, that's that that is it, wonderful. Any other contributions, Arba? Any questions?
Um. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good though, thanks.
Good, good.
Um, hmm. Well, so I've enjoyed this, I didn't join too many hours.
Oh, okay, okay.
I know, just I was about ten minutes late, something.
Okay.
But. Yeah, so, um, listening to a contributor like Shiloh said, okay, so. What I want to ask you, like, is it okay for a Christian to? To go go in and out of it? Like, um. Like Shiloh was saying, you build your faith little by little, then you can get to the point where you can. Say that you let the mountains be moved and, you know, but. I- is it okay? That, you know, you can. Go, you know, higher in faith and then come low and go back like fluctuating, I I don't know, I don't know.
I understand what you're saying, I understand. So is it possible for your faith to fluctuate? Is that what you what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it that doesn't work that way?
Yeah, yeah.
Because. It's so, because, um, I I one thing is that I think that. Social media. Is helping in a way, but it's also. Help and contributing to this fluctuating thing I'm talking about.
Okay.
Because like I was saying last week, at times. I see that, you know, um, I'll hear a word that, you know, I'll be so, you know, like, my faith will be up there. Or a testimony, my faith will be up there, then I'll hear something. Maybe concerning a situation that I want to build my faith, you know, or go to. And I'll hear something that's maybe on social media and then it will calm down.
I see. Yes, yes, yes. No, you are describing it perfectly. You know, because if you read Psalm one, it says, blessed is the man who walks not in the counsel of the ungodly. Nor sits in the seat of scorners. In the way of sinners. But his, um, sorry, I'm mute. But his, his law is in the word. Oh, Brock, are you muted?
His delight.
His delight, delight, yes. Um, yes, so blessed is the man who walks not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor sits in the seat of scorners. Nor stands in the way of sinners, but his delight is in the word of God and in his word, uh, in his law of God. And in his word, does he meditate day and night and he shall be as a tree planted by the water. Said that best fruit in its season. So that's that Psalm one. Basically paints a picture for us of how the word of God works in your life. He says that the man, before he meditates day and night in the word of God, there are three things he doesn't do. He doesn't walk in the counsel of the ungodly, he doesn't sit in the seat of scorners and he doesn't stand in the way of sinners. What does that mean? Walking in the counsel of the ungodly, it means following ungodly advice. Counsel means advice or ungodly suggestions, you know, and you you said it perfectly. Social media is packed full of that. There, everybody's trying to communicate something to you. Even when it's just a comedy skit that you're watching, sometimes there is advice in it for you. There's some own counsel and it may be ungodly. So. Blessed is the man who doesn't walk in the council. Now, to walk in the council, in other words, to follow it, to implement it in your life. Now, there are some things that we might listen to but not implement. Here, it says, don't implement ungodly counsel. So that's number one. Number two, he says, don't sit in the seat of scorners. In other words. Scorners, mockers, people that are mocking God. He said, don't sit in the seat of scorners. Don't, don't, don't partake of that process. And the third one, it says, don't stand in the way of sinners. In other words, don't, you know, you might just be hanging out there. You're not going to participate, you're not going to, you know, but. You're hanging in there and things are happening in your presence. These things may affect you without you knowing it. Then when you want to exercise your faith, then there's this niggling doubt that just pops up and say, hmm, that thing might not work. And you trace that thought and guess what? It's coming from some video that you watched. So we have to be very, very vigilant. The Bible tells us to be alert, vigilant as to what we take in because eventually it will affect our faith. Yeah, so thank you for that contribution. That that makes so much. Now to come to your question about fluctuating faith. Can your faith fluctuate? The answer is, oh no, yes, a resounding yes. It happens to us, all of us, all the time. You spend one whole week at a retreat. Where everybody there is a believer and is only talking about God. You're not discussing football, you're not discussing hair products, you're not. Things that are not sinful, but they are not the word of God. You're not discussing them, you're only discussing the word of God. Guess what? Something will happen to your faith. Something will happen to your faith, your faith will start to grow. Now, walk away from there. Get into another environment where you are just doing something else, not sinful. Just entertainment, is try that for a week without the word of God. Let's see when you'll be operating in greater faith. That environment of. You know, being surrounded by the word of God, it will enhance your faith, whereas the other one won't. So it's not that your faith disappeared, it's still there, it's just that it's not being enhanced. So you are not sharp, you're not able to, but if you withdraw and spend time in the word and shield yourself. Your faith will wake up again because it's there, it was given to your salvation, you know, so you haven't lost it, it's there. It's just that you are not going to be sharp in 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 exercising it. Does that make sense at all?
Yeah, a lot of things.
Okay, okay, good. Good, God bless you too. Let me come to you, Reverend, anything to share?
Yeah, thank you. I I like what my sister Alaba said. It is is very good. Um, what I want to. What you said perfectly is that says you have to be deliberate with what you listen to. You have to be intentional. You see, we live in a time where. You see, we live in a time where it's as if you owe people allegiance to listen to whatever they say or whatever they post to you. Um, I mean, in the position I have, whenever somebody comes across something, he just posts it, what do you think about this? About ninety percent of the time, I don't even watch it, I delete it. You see, if, if you don't guard, the Bible says, guard your heart with all diligence. Faith comes by hearing, whatever faith you have, God is not going to add more to it, you have to grow it for it to be active. Faith is either active or numb. Like our apostle said, it doesn't go away, but the environment, what you hear and what you see can numb your faith. So if you are not deliberate with what you're listening to, you're going to struggle because the news is all over there, but not everybody has the obligation to your ears. So please guard your heart, guard your ears, be deliberate what you're listening to. Because if you don't do that, the time that you need to exercise faith, you might be numb. And it's because of something you're listening to. So please, 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 exercise a bit of caution and concentrate more on the word, it will take, give you whatever you need. Thank you very much.
Amen, amen, thank you very much. Good, so, um, that's the contribution. Yes, 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 thank you. Good, so, um, does anyone else have anything else to add before we close? Okay. All right, so, um, I think we're closing early today, but I thought it was, um, good not to throw too much at you and then, you know, we can come back next week by God's grace and, and continue and build on where we, where we left off. So thank you all for joining and we shall see you again by God's grace next week. Have a lovely weekend.